So the, we're come back to order in the closed session. The Salisbury City Council met in closed session to obtain legal advice on a legal matter from our legal counsel. And so we are, just go back to the item we were discussing.
Okay. We need, I guess, to get Chris, just.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay, good.
Oh, there's Chris.
There he is.
Just blended in with the wall. All right. So, so we're back, had a discussion with legal to get some answers on, on some items on, on this particular topic. Megan here?
She's very out of it.
Okay, okay. We'll, hang on for her to come back, I guess.
Thank you, guys.
Glad you could go, because I gotta go. So, all right, so after we've had some discussions, any other questions or comments on the resolution 3263 from counsel? Do we have consensus to move this forward to the special meeting?
Yes, yes.
So we have four to move forward. And so at this time, we will move to public comments. So how we will handle public comments, since for some reason the liquor board gets priority over the Salisbury City Council. When I call your name, if you are, if you are in your seat, we're not going to ask you to get up to a podium, because there is no podium. We're just going to ask you to stand up, or if you need to remain seated, where you are. We don't want to have to deal with a lot of moving around in a, in a small space. If they're out in the hallway, we'll do like they do at District Court. Somebody will holler in the hallway or the side hallway, so that that individual may come in and make their comments. So first up is Brandy Wallace. And just so everybody knows, we ask everybody to give us about no more than four minutes on a public comment. If somebody has stated something that you agree with, we ask that you please say ditto, and if you have something new to add, that's fine, but just to help move this forward a little bit. So just Wallace.
Hi, my name is Brandy Nicole Wallace. I am the business owner of the Hair Clinic RX. And so I just want to just state my concern on the matter, considering the fact that I've been in business for a year downtown. And one of the reasons why I selected the location that I selected, because I feel as though it was a very amazing location, and because of the parking. Well, I lost that parking. My clients were actually parking in parking lot one and 15. And so therefore, I've been having issues as far as trying to get them to be, you know, get them to be aware of the parking situation. I've recommended some other options, however, they're very limited. I do service individuals 55 and older as well, and there are no parking as far as handicap accessibility, so that is also a concern for my clientele. And so I just, I'm aware that the Mary's going to have a roundtable for the business owners, but I definitely wanted to address this and let you guys know that this is a great concern for my business. I'm already shutting my business down early on third Fridays, because there is no parking. So I'm already, you know, trying to make accommodations, but I can't make any additional combinat-, uh, combination, uh, accommodations as far as the parking situation. So, I mean, I, I love downtown Salisbury. I'm all for, you know, the growth and affordable houses and things of that nature, because I do feel as though that that's going to bring more clientele to the areas. I don't oppose, but there needs to be a better solution for parking for the current business owners. I haven't heard anything about, you know, the, the issue for addressing about the, the current business owner. Everything is, you know, the new businesses or the new affordable houses, but what about the ones that are already serving downtown Salisbury?
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Next up is Deshaun Doughty.
Good afternoon. My name is Deshaun Doughty, resident in District Two. So, do you know one of the many reasons I prefer living on the eastern shore compared to larger cities over the bridge? I don't have to waste invaluable time hunting for a parking spot. It's a luxury that a lot of people overlook, and it's a complaint I always hear when visiting friends and family outside of the shore. But do you know what I enjoy more than finding an open parking spot? It's having a home that doesn't force me to break the bank, a home that allows me to enjoy my life and doesn't require great monetary sacrifices in other areas. However, not everyone is as fortunate, and we as a city and community must come together to ensure affordable housing is an option for both current and future residents, citizens. Salisbury is one of the fastest growing areas in the country, bringing several new faces to our community who have shared their ideas and wisdom to help our city grow. But the 2008 financial crisis has still made its impact, and recent challenges brought upon, brought on by the pandemic have put Maryland as a whole more than 120,000 housing units short of where it should be, according to the Urban Institute. How can we expect to attract, how can we expect to attract young professionals, doctors, teachers, blue collar workers, and families if we can't even afford to put a roof over their heads? It's not enough to provide housing, but ensure that the monthly rates were not forced individuals and families to cut costs in other, in other necessary areas such as groceries, healthcare, and utilities. So how do we start the process of affordable housing in Salisbury? The shortage greatly benefits officials who control rental properties, allowing them to adjust the prices to their liking, but in the competitive market with several well-known respectable agencies, we cannot lay fault at the feet of those rental specialists. We can, though, come together to create a partnership that benefits both renters and those setting the prices. We all are still recovering from the pandemic, and we cannot let our citizens, especially low-income individuals, suffer by having their house, their homes, taken because they cannot make a reasonable pay, payment. Mind you, gas prices, home goods, groceries, and other items have skyrocketed due to inflation. Will sacrifices need to be made? Of course. The parking I spoke of earlier may not be the same, but I assure you, it will be far better than that of Baltimore, Washington DC, and other cities who are not seeing the same surge that Salisbury has seen in the last decade. Do you know why I love Salisbury? Because we're a place that helps one another. We're an area that truly understands the importance of community. We have the tools and the resources to put more units that, here that will benefit countless citizens, but we need to work together to ensure it's affordable and that we don't just sit around watching our neighbors, our friends, suffer at the hands of greed. Parking affects my life for about five minutes, but affordable housing affects my life 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Carolyn Wogomath. Did I say that right?
Yes. My name is Carolyn Wogomath. I'm a city taxpayer. I've been here for about 14 years. I would like to start by saying, I'm, I'm concerned about the urgency of this meeting, a special meeting that was called on a Thursday afternoon on a city Facebook website citing that there would be an agenda attached. And when you clicked the link, there was no agenda. It was not available until the following day in the afternoon. I find it strange that common citizens cannot get information from the city. I've looked for the city master plan on the city website. It is not available. I have asked a simple question of the city via email on June 9th, asking about basic data for lots one and 15. I was immediately told I had to submit a FOIA, so you could keep track of it. I did that within 10 minutes. This is 11 days later. I've received no information in response. I'd like to also address the resolution 3263. The attorney who discussed the differences between the original LDA and the re-amended one, she did pick up all the things that I did, but she neglected to tell you that Article Five provided that the city pay all costs for construction of the garage to the tune of $10 million. That's our city tax dollars. And what I'd like to know is, how exactly is spending $10 million of taxpayer money to build a garage for the developer for the use of his tenants, not for the citizens of Salisbury? And written into the resolution is, it's quote, "in the best interest of the citizens of the city," unquote. In reading all this, the first LDA was to Deveraco LLC. The second re-amended one is to Salisbury Town Center Apartments LLC. Are they one and the same? I can't find much information about them. I found a name associated with Deveraco in 2015, Richard Gilkerson. And for the Salisbury Town Center Apartments LLC, which was incorporated in January of 2023, the agent was David Lakin of Joppa, Maryland. No one around here. I realized recently that Lot 15, which was added to this re-amended LDA, was advertised by the realty firm KLNB, not to anybody locally. This is a company outside of the area, but in producing their brochure, they have attached the fact that this development, this whole town center apartments, would be eligible for the Horizon program, which gives developers 20 years of property tax abatements. That's for the first five years, no taxes at all. For the 15 years after that, it gradually goes down, but there is tax abatement. And the Here Is Home program gives the developers paid development fees and waived water, sewer connection fees. Our water ta-, our water fees just went up this year again. And don't think that it won't happen again because of this. So I urge all of you on the city council to immediately stop the sale of all city-owned parking lots, to immediately stop repeal, stop the availability of the Horizon program that gives these basically city taxpayer giveaways to a developer. Immediately stop the Here Is Home program. We don't need to be providing them with all these fees. We, the citizens, the taxpayers of Salisbury, are paying for this.
Thank you, Ms. Wogomath.
I don't see any return on investment. And finally, I would ask you to table the vote on this resolution, and place the issue on the November 2023 ballot as a referendum for citizens. Thank you.
Next up is John Wogomath.
Yes. I'm John Wogomath, husband of the last speaker. Again, we have been city residents and taxpayers for over a dozen years. I retired as a program manager from work with the Navy and Coast Guard in major acquisitions. So I kind of understand what procurement's about. I understand high dollar amounts. I understand the importance of timely information, accurate data, and above all, transparency. I've seen very little of that at this level of the council and the mayor's office. Everything we've asked for has been a difficult slog to get information, and it's been not timely in the matter of things are acted on before we have a chance to put input into it. I also object to the idea of the sale of the city lots, who give all this tax abatements to a favored small group of developers with no return on investment. But I can see, the city will say, generations from now, the city will be better. We go into hole as large as you do on giving away city property at pennies on a dollar. You don't make up that investment anytime soon, if ever. Against the Horizon program that waives property taxes, we just had another property taxes residence in this city, and we fought hard to keep it limited to a 10% increase in our property taxes. And we're still running a deficit of over $2 million that we take out of our rainy day fund. This can't continue. We'll go broke as a city. And I also object to the idea of waivers for utility hookups, which anybody in the city that wants water or sewer has to pay a fair market price unless you're a developer. So I also object to the idea of the way the RFPs are led in this city. If they're done where there's a time period, it's not advertised or it's done very quickly. And I think it's poor negotiation practices to give one individual, the mayor, exclusive negotiations for the valuable assets like these lots, without any input from the city, without any explanation to the council or other people. You're basically giving the mayor the relative give a blind check to whoever he decides to go with. And I also am suspicious on the way the awards are made for these parking lots at these huge discounted prices. Thank you.
Next up is Manny Beckett. I do have a vote. You got it?
Yes. Hi, my name is Manny Beckett. I live at 300 block here on West Main Street. I pay for parking in parking lot one, which is inconvenient when I'm grocery shopping. I have to walk all the way across the parking lot over, and then they want to take the parking lot away. And understand the growth, they want to make growth in Salisbury. But you got to really realize you got senior citizens out here. I mean, at night, walking, it's not like it's police in the area all night long, watching. And then when it rains on top of that, and you walk from the parking lot to your apartment, well, and parking lot 15, that's taking away, they did have a couple of free spots that I could sneak in every now and then. That's all I'm concerned, is the parking. I mean, if you put up all these buildings, where is everybody going to park at? If you park, the go, parking garages, if they're not close to your, your apartments, then you still have to walk out in the rain or bad weather. So consider the senior citizens.
Next I have Susan McGargy. Okay.
I don't have a really elaborate thread to how we're going to solve this problem, but I just wanted to reiterate and say ditto on the cost benefit to the developers for getting parking lots at a very discounted rate. Somebody said that, and I thought that was kind of counterintuitive. When you go from $1.8 million in value to $275,000, that doesn't make sense. That's not a good business decision. And I don't think change is scary. I think change is good, but change is managed by processes that eliminate the scary stuff. I don't think that we're putting enough effort into affordable housing. That's already been shown, and we really need to do a better job. When I'm helping Habitat for Humanity paint a dilapidated house that's got moldy drywall with kils, that's not going to solve the problem. It's another Band-Aid. I think that we should not spend more than we earn in the town. It certainly doesn't make fiscal sense on anybody's spreadsheet that I know of. And finally, I just want to say that some of our town fathers, like Bill Otis, who did some major push for the downtown, I think he'd be rolling in his grave right now to hear how things are going to go down. And that's all I have to say.
Next I have Mary Hubner.
Hi, I'm Mary Hubner, and I live in Salisbury in Spring Chase. I've written a little something, and I have to read it. I would like to join my friends to argue to halt the sale of all city-owned parking lots, and to please discontinue the Horizon program, which does give developers 20 years of property tax abatement, and the Here Is Home incentive program that waives the development fees for the city, city water and sewer fees. Like Deshaun, I mean, parking is terrific, but I, I volunteer in the library, and senior citizen I am, and I've been volunteering there about six years, and I'm about the youngest one, and I'm 75. And now we have to walk across two streets to get to the library. And I'm not handicapped, but if I were, it would be a challenge. And I usually start my shift around nine in the morning, and when I got to the garage last Friday, almost all the parking, library, patron, parking lot spaces were taken. And the library doesn't open until 10:00. And this morning, I came to the county council meeting, and I got to, I got to the garage around quarter till 10:00, and all the library spaces, again, were taken, and the library doesn't open until 10:00. So already, there's abuse of parking spaces in the garage. Just saying. I don't know why all these changes are being made without more citizen input. And why wasn't the Unity Park project and all the other projects that are happening put to a referendum? Citizens should have a voice in this process, especially if it affects our task base. I loved coming downtown, going to different restaurants, walking along River, Riverwalk, and enjoying our city. But now my only option is the parking garage, and I probably won't be coming downtown too much. I'm not comfortable with parking garages in general, and I believe I speak for not only myself, but many seniors who aren't comfortable and reticent to use parking garages. I've never been so upset with the city that I lived in. I didn't even mention the various road issues around here. All the apartments being built at the expense of losing trees and habitat for birds and wildlife. I could, but what scares me most is what I heard at a recent meeting here, when it was mentioned that you have gone into the rainy day fund. We all put our faith in you by voting for you. I know I personally worked hard to help some of you get elected. And I feel like that that trust has been abused, abused by these issues that have come to light of late. I hope it's not too late to put a stop to what is happening and reverse the recent actions that have brought us off here tonight. And just one other thing, I, I was at the county council meeting this morning, and Joe Holloway mentioned all the complaints he's had about parking, I mean, the bike lanes. And he said that he has, that you all have, the county council has no control over that. But he did ask, I guess, the secretary, if she could look into the fact that the council has any jurisdiction over this Horizon project because of the loss of tax dollars. And one quick thing, Andy's plan talks about a town in Illinois, Illinois, and I don't know anything about the town. We don't know if it's same size as Salisbury, et cetera. Thank you.
Next I have Demetrius Marshall.
Hi, I'm Dora. I sit here and listen, and I normally don't say nothing in a public comment, or I just normally don't say nothing. A few years ago, I went into the woods. I went into the woods, and there were people living in those woods. Not only people, there were babies. There were families living in those woods. It bothered me so bad that that year, I went back to my husband, my husband's a pastor. I went back to my husband, and I've been doing this since I was 11 years old. I said, I don't want nothing for my birthday. I said, we need to raise money and go in these woods and get these babies out of these woods. Like April, I grew up in affordable housing, but my, my mother and father, they worked. It wasn't on welfare. I, I know the streets. I, a lot of landlords out here, they're slum. They sell roten-infested apartments, roten-infested housing to these people, and the people be minority, like I am. They have what you call a list, and that list is geared to the minority, the minority, that list is geared to them, and it's for the hood. Then they have a list for, you know, the upper-class people, the upper echelon, they have a hood, a list for them, and, and this, you know, they could get into better housing. Okay? From that time until now, homelessness is at an all-time high. Babies are sleeping in the streets. This is not monopoly. Everybody, we can pass go. Babies are sleeping in the streets. For anybody to oppose housing and, and affordable housing, oh, we're not guaranteed. But it's not guaranteed. Y'all keep raising the rent, and these people are sleeping in the streets. I, I raise a hand, how many have y'all evicted in the last month or so? That's a lot of people sleeping on the streets, and we sitting here as if, like, and, and the effect on it, it goes to the kids, kids, kids. I have to deal with that. I go in the streets. I care about, I care about my community. Y'all can look at me like a chicken with your head cut off if you want to. I'm calling an ace a ace and a spade a spade. It's not right. Okay, here we go. I told you when I stand up, I'm going to give you both barrels, because guess what? I wouldn't care who like it, who don't. You don't have a heaven or hell to put me in. Like, I'm, I'm going to tell you this right, okay? April, y'all made a statement and said, oh, when nobody seen the master plan. I'm going to check you on this. April, if y'all find this master plan, know that she motioned it. Find the master plan, and y'all will know. I'm calling everybody up, because it's not right. You got babies sleeping in the streets. You got, this is, this is the crazy part. This is the real crazy part. You got mentally ill people sleeping under the bridge, and y'all saying, oh, let's not build no more homes? Okay, the, the parking lot, that, that's fine. Let's work on that. Let's see if we, we can collaborate. Let's see if we can get together a reason. But no, hold on. We need more housing. We need more housing, because this, look, do you understand that these people, y'all, while y'all going home to your fancy mansion and passing by the hood, these people are sleeping in these roten-infested areas, these places that y'all have written to them, and still taking their money. And, and like, did somebody say, as the rate go up, the, the man, oh, you getting mad? I don't care if you get mad. The rate go up, the rate go up, the, um, demand for housing go up. It's a lot of people sleeping in the street, and do you care? Don't give me that, oh, I care about my community, because I'm out in these streets. I see my community, I know what's going on, and it's not right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next up is Shaney Shields, my county councilwoman.
I came here, and I'm going to ditto about senior citizens. Now, you see I have a walker? And if I wanted to go to the library and you took the, the parking space from me, I'm not parking in the parking garage, ever, because it's not safe. in a parking garage, ever, 'cause it's not safe. If you don't have security at this day and time in a parking garage, I don't trust a parking garage. And that's just my feeling. I saw where the city administrator stated 2,200 people for to live downtown. 2,200 people, but already the people who have lived in downtown. To me, that's gonna be very congested, very congested. It's gonna be like Los Angeles. When I went to Los Angeles, I went to buy some shoes. I thought I was going to a high-end shoe store, but the first thing, I saw all these people coming toward me, and I dashed into a payless, just to get away from the people. So I think the employees, you got to consider the employees that work in this building. You got to consider the people that go to the court system. You got to consider the people that come and sign that law downstairs, when it was 136 people came in and signed the law in four days. So also, you have people that don't sign because they're coming from other departments and other county or city departments. I think that one of the problems here that I see is transparency. Transparency means a lot. I think that if we knew about this situation, I knew when I was on the council, talked about locked-in and all that stuff, building, whether the movie theater was one, and apartment complex was the other. But when you're doing something, you're gonna give people waived fees, and you're gonna raise taxes, and if somebody wanted annex to the city, they got to pay all these fees and stuff, and then you can deal with, the developer has plenty of money, and waive their fees, that's not fair to the citizens and the community. I know right now in the county, I just met today, we want to still here, I met with the code enforcement officer, and I was telling him, people are living in campers, ma'am, because they don't have no place to stay. They're living in campers. If you come in my, in the county, you'll see campers, three or four campers up, which is illegal, and they don't have anywhere to stay. So we have the Ross building, which is not affordable. It's not affordable. I was told it's for rich college students, a rich leadership building or somebody. It's not affordable. We need more affordable housing, that's true. We need more affordable single housing. Now, we are building homes on Sassafras, but they start at $300,000. So that's not affordable to me for a young family. But I think the main concern, main problem is transparency. You need, before you put anything to a vote or on the table, you need to let people know. As my grandmother said, once you have let people know what you're doing, and they don't do anything with the information, your job is done. But make sure you do the job that you were elected to do. Tell people what's going on in these council meetings. Tell people, this young lady is gonna lose business because her parking spaces have been gone. Have you found what the trickle-down effect is gonna be for people that either have businesses downtown, or live downtown, or come to downtown? You want everybody to come to downtown. I call downtown across the bridge. That was our downtown. This was uptown for me when I was coming up. But if you want people to come downtown, you have to give them something. You charge all this money for parking. I know one time we talked about free parking. Well, we're not gonna give, nothing's free. So you're gonna raise the parking spaces, you're gonna raise the parking garage right first. That's gonna be raised, the parking garage. So everything's gonna be raised, the fees are gonna be raised, but nothing's giving back to the people who live here and love their community. So I'm thinking, I'm telling, I'm giving some advice to the city council, and I love the city of Salisbury, 'cause I was born here, that you need to tell people what's going on, not just collect a check every month, and not tell people what's going on in the community. Then you won't have all these people out here getting up for it. I've been here since 10 o'clock, so I can run my mouth and tell them what my opinion is. And that's all I got to say, 'cause I said ditto to everything people said, the affordable housing, I agree with April, I agree with, I don't wanna be as boisterous, 'cause some people, you can give them a mansion, they'll tear it up. You know, you have to look at both sides of the coin. So I just believe you should tell people what's going on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shields. Next is Holly Worthington.
Hi, I'm Holly Worthington, and I'm a local business owner in downtown Salisbury. I'm a single mom. Everything I have, I've worked for, everybody's handed me everything that I have. I think the first time I asked my dad to borrow $500 to buy my first house, he said, "A piece of property is a piece of mind, and if you're gonna do this, you're gonna do it on your own." So everything I have, I've earned. A couple of years ago, I purchased the synagogue building, which is 303 or 4 West Main Street. Across the street is parking lot 15. I have tenants which are over there. Also have about five other tenants that reside up there. We have no street parking for my residents, nor for the agents that work for my office or for myself. Lot 15, I was told when I purchased the building, was gonna be our lot to utilize for our parking. We had permanent parking. They have since relocated my tenants and myself over to lot 1, which eventually is going to be sold for development. Our hourly parking rate, which people come to visit our business, clients come to visit, is going from $1 an hour to $2 an hour. I mean, it's something, people are coming to your business, you don't want them to have to pay $2 an hour to come and visit your business. I actually proposed that, I know that the city is paying $50,000 to sell lot 15. I proposed to pay 55, and then do an escalation clause up to 75, and allow that parking lot to remain and be utilized by the opportunity shop and the local businesses and people that live in my building as well. I actually have a letter from the pastor who is part of the opportunity shop, which is a non-for-profit which is adjacent to our building, which he wrote. Dear Mayor and City Council, I hope this letter finds you in good health and doing well. We're ready to express our deep concerns and strong opposition regarding the proposed development of our parking lot located at 123 Camden Street and directly across West Market Street from the opportunity shop of Asbury United Methodist Church. As concerned nonprofit business owners and active members of this community, we firmly believe that this development would have significant negative consequences for businesses and events in downtown Salisbury. First and foremost, this parking lot serves a vital resource for residents and visitors alike. It is, its convenient location and ample parking spaces play a crucial role in supporting local businesses and ensuring easily, easy accessibility. Removing or reducing the parking availability would create unnecessary hardships for customers, discouraging them from patronizing downtown establishments, including the opportunity shop. This could ultimately result in a decline in economic activity, potentially leading to closure of many small businesses that are a lifeblood of our community. Furthermore, the development of this parking lot would undoubtedly exacerbate the existing traffic congestion issues around downtown that are already problematic. With limited parking options, drivers would be forced to circle the area in search of parking, leading to increased traffic, longer commute times, and unnecessary long walks from areas where public parking is available. I urge you to consider the environmental economical impact on this proposed development. Instead of developing this law, I strongly advocate for exploring alternative options to enhance downtown Salisbury. The letter goes on. The one problem that I have is that the city, a few years ago, declared this surplus, which I had no idea it was declared surplus, because as I've been occupying this business, that lot has been full every day. To me, surplus would mean a lot that's not being utilized for the purpose that was set forth, and the fact that this lot is utilized by everybody and is called surplus, I don't think really counts as surplus, to the point where they actually added charging stations there. So that means it's actually being utilized as you're calling it a surplus. Long story short, I at least believe there should be some parking left remaining. I am all about, the people that are doing the development are friends of mine, I am all about having the downtown be revitalized, but I also think we all need to work together. And as far as affordable housing, will there be subsidized housing within this? Is this actually affordable? Is, I mean, looking at, do we have a roadmap of what the costs are gonna be? Because the Ross is anywhere from 829 a bedroom to 929 a bedroom. So to me, that's not affordable to a common person. I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at as far as this project, and I hope that you consider listening to everybody that is putting forward, you know, the effort to come here and speak, because we all have concern.
Thank you, Ms. Worthington. Next is Stacy Walsh.
She had to go. I actually have, I have to.
If she's, we'll move on.
Okay. She wrote a letter, she had to take, she had her three words.
Next is Norita Gallon. Did I say that right?
Wait, Norita Gallon? Yes.
Yes.
My name is Norita Gallon, and I recently started a small business downtown after losing my son to help, to help my family to raise money to better afford our household built, selling up lot 1, 11, and 15 will affect my business because there's no parking. It will affect other small businesses. It will affect citizens who live out there, as the other people have mentioned, senior citizens and other people that are not comfortable parking in the parking garage. I ask that you please stop the sale and the development of these lots. Developers benefit, and I feel like we don't. Thank you.
Next is Michael Weisner.
Thank you. My name is Michael Weisner. I live at 438 Brawling Road in Salisbury, New Orleans. And I'm here in opposition to the proposal of lots 1, 11, and 15 to Salisbury County and Warren, Tennessee. But I first want to state that I do not own any real estate in the downtown area and will not be directly affected by this project, whether it's approved or not. Indirectly, yes, directly, no. I have previously sent the mayor and council a lengthy email about my concerns about the project and the negative impact it will have on the finances of the city, as well as the overall negative impact of this project that will have on the downtown area. But I've only mentioned two of them at this time. Remove all 357 conveniently-located parking spaces and replacing them with a multimillion-dollar garage, paid for and owned by the city, but designed to benefit the developer and the future tenants of Salisbury County Apartments, will place a heavy burden on the employees, customers, and public who work, visit, or transact business in downtown Salisbury. This agreement gives a developer, all, this gives a developer and all 226 tenants the right to purchase parking permits ahead of the public, so that pretty much fills up the garage without providing much, if any, parking to the general public. That's in section 1, 2.2.2, paragraph 3. However, in addition, there is supposed to be an Exhibit E attached to this agreement, given the details of these parking permits and the arrangement. Schedule E is missing from what you have circulated to the public. So it is not, as was said earlier by this woman sitting in the seat, Schedule E is not in these official documents. I can't see how you can approve this contract and go forward with this tonight without seeing what you are signing. But you have legal counsel for that, against looking at just that issue for you. And I might add, there will be no parking at all for two years during the construction of this project. It's a major project that's gonna take up two years, I think they've given themselves four years to do it. So you assume it's gonna take at least half the time. There'll be no parking downtown because of the construction site. It's gonna take two years to build a parking garage. So anybody who has a business downtown, you might as well close up now and save your money and move out for another vacation. The tax incentive is requested, it's requested by them, and they're listed in this thing. Requested by the developer, going to the mini-miles of dollars. There are literally seven different incentive programs the developer has listed in the agreement. And that they want, this is a quote, this is the seven they list, they said, quote, "The city in good faith consider..." Well, it says to their benefit, and much is considered worse to the benefit of the city. That's section 3.1.2. The biggest incentive would be the Horizons program, which would give millions of dollars in profit tax savings to the developer over the next 20 years. The tax savings to one company only shifts the tax provision to everybody else in the community. The other big request in this document is a waiver of water and sewer connection fees. The current cost of one EDU is $3,710. That's a hookup fee. Waivers of 226 units amount to $838,460, plus the ones for the commercial units. I don't even know how many commercial units are, 'cause this document, it's supposed to be incomplete, doesn't mention how many commercial units are. The city just raised the water and sewer rates, as everybody knows, by 10%. So how are we gonna forgive $800,000 on one project when we're raising the water and sewer rates on everybody, in matter of their economic status or their income and their situation? And when they add the cost of the $10 or $15 million for the cost of the parking garage that the city's gonna pay to benefit the developers, how does that benefit the city residents? The reason for there being, the reason for us being here tonight started on October 28, 2012, when the city declared lots 1 and 11 to be surplus property. I did a lot of research to find this stuff out. Well, obviously, much has changed.
Please wrap up, Ms. Weisner.
Twenty years. And just in the past couple of years, the city has sold several large valued lots. There's absolutely no way that these lots can navigate the surplus, given these changes. These two lots, plus lot 15, are valuable and very much needed assets of the city. Definitely not disposed of properties. The argument may be made by the developer that the amended and restated land disposition agreement is an LDA, but these three lots should be approved because the city previously agreed to an LDA for lots 1, 11, and they already had a deal. However, that agreement was made on October 12, 2015. Seven years have passed since that, and they haven't completed the original LDA.
Thank you, Mr. Weisner.
My wife will finish it when you call her name.
Next is Robert Taylor.
Good evening. I'll skip about my 50 years living here. Probably, I'll take on anyone. Couple things before I get into what I really came to say. I've been doing legal work primarily with local governments for most of that period I mentioned. Thought I'd seen everything. Well, I haven't, until tonight. The other thing I want to mention, it's a technical point, but in your rules of procedure, it says that if you move something on from a work session to formal consideration, it has to be at a regular meeting. That's a quote, "regular meeting." The meeting that's scheduled for tonight after this one is a special meeting. So it would not be proper under your, excuse me, under your rules to proceed tonight at the special meeting, but have to be done at a regular meeting. That's in your rules. Okay, moving on. Every time a discussion like this comes up, you hear more malarkey. I had to listen to a spiel before this item came up about the development situation, 2,200 homes, this, that, and the other. I won't go into it except for a few minor points. The city's growth rate and the county's growth rate has dropped dramatically in the last 15 years. Population increase in Wycomico County, the last 10-year census through 2020, was about 4,600 people. The 10 years before that, 2000 to 2010, almost 15,000. So that's a huge drop. From 2014 to now, this current year that just ended, enrollment at SU has dropped by almost 20%. We don't have a general housing shortage in Salisbury or Wycomico County, general. There's plenty of construction going on. Just drive around and look at it. There's going to be- There's going to be, at the next meeting of planning and zoning, as I understand it, the further development of the old Salisbury Mall, that's about a 50-acre site. I don't know how many hundreds of homes, but it's gonna be in the hundreds, I'm sure. And of course, there's the other piece of property next to it, St. Alden's in Beglin, that's another roughly 20 acres still undeveloped. Plenty of property, some of it has recently been bought. The back part of the university orchard, that's 20-some acres. That was bought by a development group from Wilmington within the last year or so. So, the problem is really affordable housing. Now, none of the housing that's being proposed is affordable housing. There's nothing in the contract about providing any affordable housing on Lots 1, 11, and 15. There just isn't. Mr. Weisner has given a very good explanation and analysis of the contract. I could not possibly recommend that if I were the city's attorney. I was the county council's attorney for some years. So I have a little bit, I may not be the world's leading expert, but I don't think I'm at the bottom of the list either. So what we're seeing tonight is, I think, just something that is really irresponsible and almost obscene, when you stop to think about the fact that what's attracting the development here, just like it attracted the Ross, is the honeypot waiver of the fees, the connection fees. That's almost $400,000 for the Ross. 226 apartments for Lots 1, et cetera. If they use the 1EDU per lot, that's gonna be over $800,000. A 20-year tax waiver, God knows how much that's gonna be. I would just estimate maybe 10 million. Because obviously, in that period of time, assessments are gonna go up. Tax rate's gonna go up too, I'm sure. It's going up five times in the last 11 years. You think it's gonna stop, I don't. And so that's what we're really facing here. But we keep hearing over and over again, the mayor, for example, oh, we don't get any money off of these lots. Well, we don't get any money off the city park either. Should we sell that? We don't get any money off the streets. Should we sell them? We have parking here for a purpose to enliven and enable the downtown area. Now, I did bring, I did find this, and I'm sorry I didn't get it to you earlier, because I couldn't recall where it was. But it's in this book, and if you're not familiar with it, it's written by Pete Cooper. He was the city engineer from 1950, I believe, through the 70s. And he was the one that was involved in the urban renewal, where our parking lots are now. Now, I've heard someone has said, oh, well, that was strictly for redevelopment. Not so. I'm giving this to you, I'm sorry, I just pulled it out. But in Pete Cooper's book, it's in Chapter 25, Urban Renewal, and it's about specifically urban renewal here in the downtown area.
You can wrap up, Mr. Taylor.
Well, can I read you a couple of things?
Sure.
A lot of other people, it's been longer than I have, I think. I'm gonna put my glasses on, sorry. He points out that originally, they were concerned about the parking. The council passed a special tax district, they raised funds, and they allowed two downtown parking spaces for 150, two downtown parking lots for 150 spaces. Quote, "This was not sufficient, if this group had spent up to the full extent of their financial capabilities and began to seek other solutions to the problem. Just at this crucial moment, federally-sponsored urban renewal came along, and this program provided just what the downtown merchants needed." Before we proceed further, he goes on and discusses the people who were on a committee before. Then he says, and concluding, "I will not attempt to go into the detail of the many meetings, decisions, agreements, and disagreements, but will sum up the exercise and end result of this planning and this urban renewal program as being a very positive assistance in making it possible for Salisbury to consolidate land it needed for parking and construct the major parking lots." So that's how that got done. And any notion that this was just, the lots are just some interim usage to be followed by further development, buildings, apartments, et cetera, is just nonsense. That's why they done it. That's why they did it. That's urban renewal of a sort. And it should still, it's still needed here. Mr. Weisner has turned in an excellent analysis of the parking situation and what it's going to be. What you're going to be doing is by this honeypot of these waivers and the sales of the lots for development, you're gonna be totally screwing up the downtown area. And if you can imagine that with 2,200 people, I think that's pie in the sky, but let's just say it's half of that, 1,100, it's gonna be a total mess. And it should be stopped, it should be stopped now. But if you're gonna go on and do this formally, you need to do it at a regular meeting, not a special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is Stacy Weisner.
I'll complete reading my husband's message. That we timed at the house four times, and it was under four minutes. So we want to be careful with that, sir. The argument may be made by the developer that the amended and restated land disposition agreement, the LDA, for these three lots should be approved, because the city previously agreed to an LDA for Lots 1 and 11, and they already had a deal. However, that agreement was made on October 12, 2015. Seven years have passed, seven years, since then, and they haven't compiled, complied with the original LDA. Now they want to come back, change everything, plus throw in Lot 15, add in a city finance and maintain parking garage. That's a little minor, huh? Plus, take advantage of all the tax incentives the city added since then. This agreement even admits that much, quote, "The developers have agreed to amend the original LDA in its entirety." Might try to look up the original resolution of the defaulted agreement, but it was not on the website. We wonder, is prior agreement null or void? It's not, we can't find the original agreement from 2015. We find that interesting. Thank you.